Well, this meeting, please come back to order and welcome. And we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) two of five of the United States of America and two republics for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And the first thing on the agenda is public comment. Anybody wish to address us?
I'm Dean Rubin from Lee, though after I'm done you may think I'm Roger Spidey. I looked at the agenda for today and there's at least, I counted four items that each of which are about a 1% hit to the taxpayers. So you guys may, well, probably not all tonight, but you're gonna have a chance to vote on four things and each one is gonna either add or not add 1% to our tax bill.
Which ones are those?
And I have them and I will get them in in my three minutes. Okay, so I mean, the first one, just in a particular order, is the MoHarmut Cafeteria. And, you know, we may, I think we need that and, okay, we need it, we need it, but I don't really like this language that we're somehow, because we have this magic local government center money, that we're somehow funding it without, with minimal impact on the taxpayers. If we pass it, you know, that's that much less money that the taxpayers will have. The next one is the fund, the Reserve Fund. It's in the minute as sort of done, but I think the Board has to vote to move that $500,000 from the fund balance into the Reserve Fund. And if they do, that's about 1.25% of more that the taxpayers will pay. That's $500,000 that you guys are holding rather than, are in the taxpayers' pocket. The budget goals. Number one is a nice, won't exceed the cost of living goal, which I like very much. And then the next sentence has an exception. Health insurance, negotiated contracts, state costs, blah, blah, are not subject to the COLA. Well, you know, a lot of those things, like state contract, like the contracts, have the COLA built into them. And anyway, if it's not, if you approve that, that's, you know, basically you're approving more than a COLA increase and I'm guessing at least 1% to the taxpayers there. And the last thing is the item in the paper about the tuition, where we basically knocked about $2,000 off our tuition to New Market, but we didn't really change the deal. You know, usually when we give, like, for example, Barrington, this nice price, we're giving them that price for regular education and then special education, they basically have to pay their full costs. Here, it's kind of, well, it's hard to tell from the newspaper, but it's vaguely worded where it looks like we are paying for most of the special education and then there may be additional special education costs that they come up with. Anyway, we should get all that cleared up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? (inaudible) right on to approve the minutes of September 4th. Al?
I'd like to make a motion approving the minutes for nine for 13.
Moved by Al, seconded by Kenny.
I would like to abstain from the voting as I was not present.
Thank you. Kenny?
Minor correction. With the vote to go into the non-meeting, with myself abstaining, I think the vote should be 6-0-1. So I didn't vote not to go into the non-meeting.
6-0-1, 6-1-0.
Right.
1-0 with one abstention. Thank you, Kenny. Any objections to that? No. Anything else? Could I say a show of hands, please? Seven and the affirmative motion carries. Announcements and commendations in the district.
Todd Allen from the high school. Just wanted to start out by just letting, reminding community that tomorrow night is our open house. It starts at 6:00 in the cafeteria with a performance of our jazz band and then at 6:20, I'll make some welcoming remarks and then at 6:25, the bell rings and people get an opportunity to kind of go through the day in the life of their child compressed into about an hour and a half. But it's a good time had by all and it's always a very well-attended event, so I encourage parents to come. Couple of kudos I want to pass out to my staff. Couple of things that came up recently, some of you might see in the paper this morning. Celeste Best, one of our science teachers, was just given an ING, Unsung Hero Grant for $2,000 to be used for innovative equipment for her science lab. And so that's a really exciting kind of thing to recognize, one of our teachers being one of the best in the country. So that was wonderful. And English teacher Sean Kelly has been, started working on a journalism workshop that he began putting together last spring, working with the NACI LOB School of Communication and the New Hampshire Press Association. And yesterday, they pulled it off. We had about 100 high school kids, 40 of them from Oyster River, kids from New Market, Cobrown and Spalding all came to Oyster River and spent a day doing a variety of workshops, working with journalists in the field. It was a great event. All the kids left really feeling really inspired and excited and hopefully it's gonna really motivate some kids to pursue careers in journalism. So anyway, a couple of great, great kudos to my staff. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Excuse me. Jay Rashard of the middle school. I just want to thank the entire middle school school community for a very successful open house last night from 6:30 to 8:00. One of the biggest challenges, particularly for our new filmies that are coming in in fifth grade, is the parking situation. So I appreciate their tolerance for the challenges that face and it was, again, great turnout. Thank you.
Thanks.
Carrie Veish from Mastway. I also just want to echo the same thing about our curriculum night last week at Mastway. But first off, I want to thank parents for braving the storm because it was quite a rainy night that evening. And I'd also like to say thank you to the staff who did a fabulous job, actually modeling exactly what they do every day, which is being on the fly when things change, making them work, because we lost power in half the building. So they were very, very great and creative and I know teachers had parents sign up for conferences, upcoming parent conferences and goal-setting meetings, which is great. And I know many of them sent home their PowerPoint presentations that they, you know, weren't able to showcase during that evening. Tomorrow, we have our first PTO meeting of the year in the North Commons at 9:30, so we really hope to have a lot of parent representation. We know we have teacher representation attending as well, so we're excited for a new year and we welcome everyone to join. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'd like to recognize the PTO for the job they did, demolishing the old playground or aspects of the old playground in one day with three pieces of equipment and about 38 really highly skilled volunteers and a group of UNH students who came over and lifted those heavy telephone poles that I could lift 25 years ago but couldn't this time. We look forward to this Saturday when the construction will be laid out and then the following Saturday, where about 106 people will be volunteering to do our bond raising. Also, would like in the same breath, to recognize my staff for the job they've done in the opening. Lunch is not a pleasure at MoHarmut right now and my staff has pitched in like it was the most wonderful experience in the world and it shows on the faces of the kids. Not every kid loves the way it's set up and the way it works, but most kids don't know that they're living in unacceptable conditions during lunch. And that needs to change. I guess that's enough.
Thank you.
We have 18 open houses that you can come to. There's a list.
I just wanted to commend many of the teachers who, I don't know if everyone's aware of the process of how we form committees, so we decided that annually, at the beginning of the year, we would put out to all staff if they had any interest in some of the committees at the district level. There's a writing committee that we're forming. There's professional development committee. There is a tech mentor committee. There is a math committee. There is a wellness committee that Kenny is on. But every year, I've been putting it out to staff as a voluntary effort and opening it up to anyone who would like to join across the district. And I really want to commend the staff that I never have a shortage of people who, you know, provide interest in the committees and really bring a really great wealth of different perspectives and vertical grade-level representation. So I really want to commend them because it is a voluntary effort. It's something that they agree and out of interest decide to join. So I'm really excited about this year and I just want to recognize their efforts in those committees. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Board? Kenny?
I just wanted to maybe jump on what Dennis said. I had the privilege to go to MoHarmut yesterday for lunch hour and I'm sorry I haven't gotten to Mastway yet, but the scene reminded me of the Marx Brothers movie, Night at the Opera, when they're crossing the ocean and there's stowaways and they're in a state house, this little room, and it's amazing how many people wind up in that room. And it's, and the staff, I think, were doing an amazing job and the kids, like Dennis said, they looked happy. And the condition certainly didn't seem tenable, but the kids were happy and really I commend everyone for working through that situation as best they can.
Thank you. Al?
I wanted to throw out a, you know, appreciation to Todd and Cory and the cross-country coaches. This last weekend was the Bobcat Invitational and it was really great. I mean, I think there was 560 runners that came and it ran like clockwork and it was a really good event and it really showcased Oyster River. So I thought we just did a great job.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I want to just let people know that the harvest dinner, at this point, is scheduled for October 3rd, which is a Thursday, and that it's going to be local produce as much as possible and the community's going to be invited, so a chance to get the community there. It's gonna be at the high school. I don't have a date. High school cafeteria, but I don't have a time yet.
Anybody else? Moving right along. Assistant Superintendent's Curriculum Instruction, Curriculum Update.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Doris.
Did you want to speak?
Doris, did you want to?
What? You missed your chance.
We have been, Doris Morris, Food Service Director. We have been pulling things together rather quickly and for the harvest dinner, we do have the time. It will be 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM at the high school. $7 for an individual ticket or $15 for a family.
Dave.
October 3rd. Thank you.
Thanks. Carol?
The Assistant Superintendent.
Good evening. So an update to curriculum. We are in our first week and coming to the end of our first week of STAR assessment in grades 2 through 10 for reading and math. So far, so good. I've been telling our tech mentor committee that we're in a state of what I call, I refer to as research and development. So this is new for us and we're doing the best in learning as much as we can about how to best go about this and make it meaningful. The purpose of STAR assessment, just to be clear, is that we're using this information. Three weeks into school, we have some baseline information about all the kids in the district, grades 2 through 10, and that helps to inform our instruction right away. So right away, we'll be able to see kind of how to change and alter instruction to best meet the needs of the students that we have in our classes. So I'm really excited about that. As far as other opportunities, October 4th, we start working at the middle school and high school with Atlas, which is a way for each individual teacher to be able to articulate what they do in their different courses and classes. And then that allows us within the district to share what we do. So that will start on our first full-day professional development day. So teachers will have six hours of time to work with one another at, by department and individually. There's some structure to that day and some outcomes with Atlas and I know that the elementary schools will be doing some teacher conferences that day as well. So, yeah, we're pretty excited about where we are right now. I feel really good. The teachers, I'm really proud of the work that we've done and the training. We have a lot of people that have really taken on a leadership role in helping roll these pieces out. Atlas, we had a group of teachers really play an integral part in kind of creating what that looks like and customizing it for Oyster River, so I'm really proud of that. Anne?
Question's probably a little bit premature, but it's important to me. I appreciate that in science and in social studies, the curriculum, the core curriculum is still being developed, but when is it reasonable for the community to expect some printed document that shows them what they can anticipate their child will learn by grade level in the Common Core?
What we're getting ready to do with the new website Josh Olstad and I are working on is putting out, for every grade level, there's a parent letter that Great City Schools has developed that is really excellent to define at every grade level what the expectation should be for parents, how they can help support their kids at home, what are kind of the big bullet points for math and reading. We haven't, we haven't had the resources quite yet for next-generation science as far as Common Core and a change in standards. That is fairly new. That came out really last April. We got the final version of that, set of standards. So that is something we've been working on, the middle school and high school, over the summer. Elementary, we were really working, still focusing on English Language Arts and Math to make sure we were implementing those standards and then we start to focus on next-generation science. As far as Atlas goes, what parents should expect to see by the end of this year and maybe even sooner is just a scope and sequence. So what that means is it's a map or a calendar of September through June over the school year and some broad unit descriptions that will describe the different units that will be taught in that course from September through June or if they're half-year courses. So parents get a sense of just the overall units of study for the course or for the entire year in that classroom.
Why just parents?
Well, everyone will, but I was responding to Anne's question about community and what parents might expect to see. But it's not just for parents. Primarily, Atlas is really for all of the staff.
I can access this without...
I'm sorry, Maria.
I can access this information without getting huffy, which is what I usually do get when I try our website.
Right. Well, that's the beauty of us moving to a new website, that we'll be able to put things front and center, not have things buried. I think that's been a challenge, that sometimes we start to put so much content on a website that it's hard to navigate through it and find easily what we hope to, we're searching for. And that's one of the things that we're working on for curriculum is that with Josh, is that we're having a defined curriculum page that really spells out what you would hope to see for parents, what we're working on, having a lot more transparency to what we're working on. It's hard to put things into the website now without them getting lost and providing a set of directions on where to get it. So, I mean, that's, that's one of our things that I'm really looking forward to. I'm really proud that Josh is doing that. Any other question?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, as alluded to earlier in public comment, we have been making movement in relation to tuition agreement. The framework of that agreement has essentially been stabilized. We haven't negotiated any final document, but I wanted to take the time to report out to the Board and give a sense of what I'm hoping will happen in the upcoming weeks. So, as alluded to, we have offered in a preliminary fashion, without, you know, Board vote yet, a structure for a framework that could become an agreement. We, and I say "we" it's Tom and Al and me representing you. And so the essence of the agreement is based on the concept that we started out with, which is that we wanted to be able to maintain and enhance programming at our high school. And the second prong of that was to be able to find a revenue stream other than our taxpayers to support our high school. So the tuition amount that we sent out to New Market, Barrington, and eventually Deerfield would be $14,500. That generates in the first year about $3.6 million worth of income, of which two would be required to staff up and about 25% of that amount would be used to help taxpayers. So the number that we crafted initially, we were just putting down what our average costs were, but then as we refined those costs, we realized that we could offer a number far higher than we currently charge Barrington, but not as high as we originally were putting out there in the framework. So the concept between the 14,500 and the $13,000 that we charge Barrington is blending in the normal, everyday special ed costs. So anything that's exorbitant, like out-of-district placement or due-process hearings or contracted services still owned by the sending district. And there's a cap on how many staff we would bring in related to special ed before the district would have to pay for it themselves. So in the $14,500 figure, we've included four case managers and 11 paraprofessionals in special ed. If that number became 10 professionals and 22 paras, the sending district would pay the difference in staffing. So we protected ourselves in that regard. One of the commitments we've made right along the way is that we would not inherit the extraordinary costs of any district's special ed population. The other piece that I would put out for the Board to know and for the public to know is that we've built in a 2% increase per year for the first eight years of the agreement. In the eighth year, you'd reestablish a base and reestablish your COLA, so you're not stuck in a situation that happened to our neighbors where they offered a number initially and then were locked into that number impotuity, that we built in a way for the district to be able to adjust that number over time. So the rest of the framework is fairly predictable. Transportation costs are at the sending district's responsibility, so we're not assuming anybody's transportation, though we certainly are open to becoming a contracted service for another district and have them pay us to move their students. At this point, the agreement does not, does not cover transportation. So the sending district takes care of their own transportation. And those are probably the major pieces. So my goal tonight was to kind of put that out there for you to be considering, but on October 2nd, what I plan on doing is putting the actual framework in front of you. So what I'm hoping will happen, not on October 2nd, but then you'll have the draft that you can review for a couple of weeks, is that the Board would then send out this agreement to the three school systems that have been soliciting our seats for better, for over a year. Now, so I'm not asking the school board to make a decision on what school system to work with at that meeting. I'm just simply saying, let's move the marker to the sending schools' boards to see whether they're still interested, because we have some sense that they are, but we don't have any official sense that they are. And by sending a document out in your name as a body, we can find out who seriously wants to occupy those seats at Oyster River High School. At that point, if we know we have just one suitor, then the Board can consider that suitor and make a determination of whether they want to work with that school system or not. If we, if you decide you want to, then we'll finalize negotiations with the idea that we would be going out into public forums between Thanksgiving and, say, Valentine's Day. So we'll be out for about three months talking about what it is and what it isn't. And then it will require a vote of this body, excuse me, a vote of the people in March. So we have a referendum for Oyster River towns. Do you agree that we would enter into a long-term trust and agreement with X school system? I think the issue in between is what if we have multiple suitors who say we're interested in this agreement? Then it comes back to this body and again, you have to make a decision of which school system you ultimately want to work with. So it's trying to get the process to a place where decisions are being made, public conversation is happening, and then ultimately, if the majority of this body moves it forward into the public forum, so we can have those conversations with our public, with the end game being that our public and the other school systems' public would vote in March, yea or nay. So we can bring this process to a closure, because, you know, for us, it's been not just the year I've been here, year and a half I've been here, but it was the year before. So this has been going on as a conversation for the, for the better part of two years officially, and I think that we are at the point where we need to go through a process to bring it to closure. So that's the plan I have, but obviously is subject to the will of the Board when we hit October, but I'd be glad to answer questions.
At some point, this Board will have to vote to put the warrant article on the ballot.
Well, yep, exactly. I mean, this Board is going to have to be proactive in choosing a school system and then adding it to the warrant.
Anne?
Dr. Morris, you described the extenuating circumstances that special ed wouldn't be covered. I don't know how many, much of these services are used at the high school level, but would they include speech and occupational therapy and nursing? We do have students in the district who require nursing assistance at the lower levels. I don't know if that...
Yeah, I mean, the nursing piece is part of the staffing that we would add to the high school in order to be able to service that number of students effectively. So it's not part of the special ed, but it's part of that $2 million that we use to staff up the school to the appropriate level to service the additional children.
Okay.
And was the OT and PT are, at this point, contracted services? So the sending district would own those because they would make a contract with the provider. And then speech is also one of the, well, it's about 0.6 increase in speech in order to service the additional children.
Okay. And my second question is the current Barrington students. Please refresh our memory. What is our plan with regard to our current Barrington students?
Yep. We have been, at least I have been, very bold and I'm hoping the Board supports it, and I think you would, in saying that any Barrington child who is enrolled at our high school would be able to graduate from our high school. 2015-16 is the implementation year, so if we entered into an agreement with any school system other than Barrington, then those children, currently freshmen, would be juniors that year and so they would have two years left to their high school career. We would let, in my mind, I would be strongly recommending to you that we allow those children to continue their education here.
So my next question ties in with that. Currently, Barrington pays us $13,000 and an additional 6 for special education. Those current Barrington students, would their tuition rate change or would they maintain that same rate? And I'm a little concerned, at the moment, if Barrington's paying us 13 plus 6 and it will be dropped to 14,5, that's negative for me.
It isn't really, because when you calculate, I've done this calculation with Sue, 20% of the population is special education in the Barrington population. And when you calculate 20% with the additional 6,000 and then the 80% at the 13,000, it actually comes out to an average of less than 14,5.
Okay.
So we're in, we're in good shape. We were very careful about making sure that we, we came out in a stronger place.
Thank you for sharing that.
Yep. Thank you for asking.
Megan.
I have a question about the $2 million of cost. You mentioned that for this model, it would include four case managers and 11 paras. Is that included in the incremental $2 million?
It is. It is included. Yep. But if it goes beyond that, it's not.
Okay. And then, my other question about the 20%, is that what we're currently seeing as the population of Barrington, or 20% of those students who come to Oyster River currently?
That is Barrington's own figure, the 20%.
Okay.
And right now, we have, I believe, and I believe it's seven special, no, it's 10 special ed students this year of the 70 that we have.
What if that figure increased to 25%?
Well, it's based on the percentages that they report to the Department of Education, and, you know, we look at that figure. I've done all the data research on these school systems, and those are pretty solid numbers.
I guess my concern is getting to Anne saying it. What is that point, that inflection point, where, you know, the 14.5 would not give us ample funding?
Well, remember, I put in the governor already that if it goes beyond those four case managers and those paraprofessionals, there's no way that that could fall back on Oyster River taxpayers. It automatically goes right back to the sending system. So, I was trying to make sure that that contingency could never happen to us.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Morse, Megan's caused my brain to function more highly.
It's so often happens.
I guess the other services that we supply in the school, our SRO officer, those types of positions, does that number reflect increases in those other areas in our...
We wouldn't anticipate an increase in SRO. You know, we have a great officer who's here, and, you know, whether the school is 680 or 850, it would still be one SRO officer for the school.
Would we increase our guidance staff?
Yes, that's part of the staffing up. We'd increase English staff, math staff, social studies staff, science staff, guidance. Those are the highlights of...
Lunchroom.
Lunchroom. Yeah. But Todd spends a lot of time in the lunchroom with his administrators, just as Jay does, so I'm pretty sure they'll do the same.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there a sense from either Deerfield or Barrington that they're going to be, you know, if we put in a proposal in October, we give this back to them, that they're ready to answer or to make a bid on our proposal?
Yeah, I think part of the process of putting it out there is to give them a determinate date to return their interest. So, you know, if we know, we put it out in October and give them till the beginning of November, I mean, it's not one of those situations where it would surprise anybody. I mean, we've been talking about it at length of time. And I think that all three school systems are at a very different place. You know, there's been some outreach from Barrington recently that's very strong. There's been outreach from Newmarket that's been very strong. And we haven't heard from Deerfield in a while, so, you know, that's another thing that it does for us. If we put it out there and Deerfield says, "No, we're now working with Concord," then we can, that eliminates one of the three. So, it's a process of getting other school systems to make decisions against our offer. And I may be wrong, and Deerfield might write back and say, "Absolutely, we're interested." But we just don't know until we put something out there.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Sue.
You have the budget calendar. We made those changes for you that we discussed at the last meeting, added November 19th and took out November 13th. And I will send you tomorrow a schedule of those department reviews, if you're interested in attending those. There's been some time changes. They may not all be at 10:00 AM. Some are at 1:00, and where we have two departments, we may have one at 10:00 and one at 1:00. So, I'll send that out to you tomorrow. I'll have Wendy send that out to you, if you're interested.
We love meetings.
Yes.
We should add that the ABC committee has met, and they have asked if they could attend my meetings with the administrators. And I said, "I have seen no reason why they can't." So, I would want to make sure the board, if you want to attend those meetings with administrators, you're more than welcome to. They're really just discussions about how they put their budgets together and what their priorities are and so forth. But I didn't want ABC to have that invitation and you all not. So, if you would like to do that, you're welcome. I don't want anybody to think there's any secrets going on in the district, so you're more than welcome to attend.
Megan.
I have a question about what will be covered, what we anticipate will be discussed on October 30th, Budget Workshop.
Well, I left that open, because I didn't structure this the way we did this last time, because I think we all felt that we didn't need to do the line-by-line review. And I scheduled the budget to be out to everyone a week before the 24th. So, my hope is that you'll review it, look at it, and as we go through by department, those questions that you might ask when we have them come back to another meeting will come up. And if not, then you can decide who you might want to see again on the 30th. But I didn't necessarily put those people in, because you may not want to talk to some of the people, because everything's pretty clear and you don't have any other questions, so.
That's trick-or-treating night.
We'll expect you to bring candy, Megan. 30th or 31st? I never remember.
Yeah. I may submit my question.
Okay.
Important family event.
I'll make sure they get asked. Any answer.
And we'll have other meetings, too.
I may be late, I have to see, I don't think so.
And we'll have other meetings, too, so, I mean, it's not the end-all.
I know, we have many, many meetings.
And we are going to be on the 24th. We are going to be at the Lee Safety Complex. I was trying for the Durham Library, but they were already booked, so, next year.
Did you book it for next year?
No, I didn't, but I probably should.
You probably should, because that'd be really nice to do, just to be able to experience it.
Yeah. And we will have late breakfast and lunch on that day, like last year. Good enough?
Right. Thank you. Peter.
Yes. Just a few brief things to talk about. Our high school senate, for the past several weeks, we have been working on planning our annual Spirit Week, which is a great sort of school spirit-building week, in which we have themed days, in which kids can dress up from... This year, we have Decades Day, where people can dress up from their favorite decade, or our Friday is Class Color Day, where people can dress up for freshmen, have their own color, sophomores, juniors, seniors, et cetera. And that's culminated with a series of field day events, in which we have a little bit of friendly competition between the classes to see who's the best overall. And one thing that we've sort of incorporated into Spirit Week this year is our annual hypnotist show, which will be this coming Tuesday, the 24th, at the high school auditorium at 7:00 PM. And this is a great show. We'd love to see as many people there as possible. We're opening the doors to everyone in the community. It's really great. We have a professional hypnotist come in, and audience members can volunteer to go up and be hypnotized on stage and to do all sorts of entertaining things. We'd love to see you all there.
I'm sure. And what would you have?
I don't know, you'll have to find out. And that's all I have for now.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Moving right along, discussion of the budget goals.
Okay, so, we had a very intense, inspirited discussion on the budget goals the last time we were together. And so, in your packet, you have the original language struck through and the revised language. And I would just want to run through them for the public one more time. So, the first goal is that the 14-15 budget would not exceed the cost of living established by the US government, and we would use the Boston region, pretty clearly. Then I add, I did add, health insurance, negotiated contracts, and state cost shifts are not part of that. Now, we all got burned last year, and the state shifted over $500,000 worth of what has traditionally been cost with the retirement account. And, you know, had that not happened, we would have met the goal of a flat budget. So, one of the things I try really hard to do as a superintendent is not over-promise, not over-commit. And clearly, the goal is to stay within the cost of living, but I also didn't want someone six months from now, during the March referendum time, say, you know, "Morse said," and it didn't happen. I think it's far better to be honest with people, that there are issues that could impact where we stand, but the overall goal here for me as a superintendent is to try to stay within that 2% or a little bit less than 2% cost of living.
The, you know, the same with the health insurance. Last year, it came in artificially, well, it came in really low, much lower than expected, which helped us.
Right.
It could be a one, I mean, it's pretty unusual that would happen to two years.
Well, I have actually lived in, in my career, I've seen the health insurance come in at 20% in a single year. And, you know, that's pretty tough to recover from and try to stay, keep your budget rational. But I do want to assure everybody, not just at this table, but who listen, that our goal is to try to stay within the cost of living unless something really crazy happens like that shift of retirement, or the health insurance comes in at 20% when we budget. I mean, Sue and I are going to start out budgeting at right around 10%. Why? We have no real good reason why, because we won't know until we get into the budget process what that number is. But 10% seems like a sizable number to put in as a placeholder. And as Al alluded to, we were able to drop that to 4%, I believe, in this current budget. Well, that was a real gift, because that really helped us a lot in mitigating that state shift, but not enough to wipe it out. So, again, you know, the first half of that is actually where I hope to be. The second half is to just let people know that things do happen, that become hard for us to control. The second goal is to stay within class size policy, 2B. That is your 18 to 22 policy that we talk about a lot. We also know that within that policy, we have exceptions in the special ed area, where we have, you know, a group of extremely needy kids, where we only have six students to a staff member and plus another, maybe one or even two aides, because the needs of the youngsters warrant that. We also are committed as a board to offering advanced placement courses at our high school. And sometimes, the numbers don't bring us anywhere close to 18, but if, as Todd so eloquently says to me every time we have this conversation, "If we're going to make a commitment, we've got to make a commitment to run that program so it can build up over time." So, you know, we will see some of those kinds of exceptions, but by and large, we're trying very hard to stay rational. And you may recall in the current budget that we accepted 11 retirements and didn't replace them in order to bring our student teacher ratios closer to your policy. And we can still be working there. Number three is the one that we talked about at some length, and the chair felt that I had, I needed to reverse the statement, and so I did. I think it makes far more sense. So, the proposed 2014-15 budget will be analyzed to see if staff reassignment, the reassignment of funds or other savings can be determined before adding new staff or programs. So, I hope that that makes more sense to the board. The fifth goal is a complete rewrite as well. And that goal now reads, "The 2014-15 budget will support state and local standards to create predictable resource acquisition cycle and to provide assessments that give common reports to staff, parents, and community based on the aforementioned state and local standards." And then, the last revision is Goal Six, and it was an addition. "The proposed 2014-15 budget will account for unique costs associated with the implementation of common core, the draft strategic plan, proposed technology plan, and then new language and the cost of equalization for the elementary student population." So, those are the revised goals, and they're before you for consideration and adoption, or if you wish, more editing.
Todd.
Just a clarification on Goal Number One. My sense is that the negotiated contracts should be negotiated in a way to fit that 2% increase. Is that, it isn't like this is something separate that just may throw it way out of balance, but that's going to be kind of a factor in those negotiations. Is that your sense?
That's my sense as well.
Remembering that the contract tracks automatically at 3% or something by steps.
Yeah, it's not quite, it's a 1%. Yeah, yeah. There is an automatic escalator in the contracts on the steps. You're absolutely right.
Al.
Al, the only thing I was going to say is, like, on your Number One, you say, "Health insurance, negotiated contracts, and state cost shift mandates." Do you want to throw "R" in there? "R" not subject to COLA?
Um...
No.
You don't have to.
Yeah.
I had to read it three times to get me to where I saw what it meant. So, I thought "R" made sense to me, too. Rewrites are hard.
It could be just a friendly amendment, and I can slap it in there.
Do we have an amendment? No.
No.
You know, I was selected to represent the town of Lee. That's the seat I have, representing, you know, the community at large as well. But Lee has the highest tax rate in Stafford County and Rockingham County. We have 100 vacant residencies in Lee. We have tax liens going up. We have the increase in tax liens, and the hardship abatements are increasing as well. So, I often hear that this community supports education, and I know we do. We all do. But we also have people that are having a real hard time supporting it with their tax dollars, because they can't pay their property taxes. And I know for a fact, once you put the tax lien on a residency, if there is a mortgage involved, the bank will close that up real fast, and then those people will have to lose their homes. So, for me, the budget has to be as tight as a really cheap liberal can live with. And on Goal Number Three, before we add anything, it's not just reassignment. We might even have as much as, say, support teachers and want to keep everybody employed and keep them in Oyster River. It might be that we, in order to do this, need to actually let go over here.
Which is what we did in the middle school this year in terms of a home act teacher versus technology.
So, it isn't just reassignment, but the tough parts.
Probably comes under other savings.
Yes.
The all-inclusive.
So, without sobering, no.
Wow.
Does anybody want to make more?
Well...
First of all, it's not a very good sales pitch to Lee there, Maria, but I'd like to make a motion to adopt the fiscal 2015 budget goals.
Second?
Move by Al, second by Anne. Further discussion? Any amendments? Could we show, have a show of hands, please? So, we need the affirmative. Peter, in the affirmative motion carries.
Thank you.
More harem at the cafeteria.
So, also spoken about in public comment, and so, we have an opportunity that we didn't know was going to occur, and that is that we're going to get... know was going to occur, and that is that we're going to get a payment holiday as a result of a lawsuit that was brought against the local government center related to how they were using premiums that people were paying in for health insurance. The lawsuit was brought by the municipalities and school systems of the state of New Hampshire. LGC lost the suit, and then through several years of back and forth conversations with the courts and trying to figure out how they were going to deal with this lawsuit loss, they ultimately ended at a place where those school systems and municipalities that participated with LGC for health insurance would get a payment holiday, or they could have the money returned. And we chose for the payment holiday largely because it's easier to handle in our books. What that means that when we were going through the budget process last year, we had raised funds to pay for our health insurance this year, not knowing when this LGC settlement was going to finally settle. And so, we ended up with that being settled this summer, and we got a letter from LGC indicating that. And then over a period of several months, we were trying to figure out what the amount of money that we would be credited would be. And it turns out that it's roughly $650,000. It's in the letter that I, that I gave you, of which, we have to remember that a piece of that belongs to the employees. They paid in a partial share to the health insurance, but this is one of those times where I guess the benefit that we have is, is to our benefit, because since we're the majority payer of the health insurance, we get the majority of the funds. So, the citizens of Oyster River raised a certain level to our budget anticipating that we would be paying health insurance. My philosophy is just keep everything right out in the open, which is what I'm doing tonight. And this provides us an opportunity, from my perspective, to use a budget that's already been approved by the taxpayers. So, that's why I say there's no impact to the taxpayers, because they've already raised the money, to correct a situation that really is egregious at the Moharamet School. And it's a situation that previous boards have struggled with and haven't had the wherewithal to resolve. So, I saw this payment holiday as an opportunity for us to be able to resolve the cafeteria issue at Moharamet once and for all. So, Kenny alluded to his visit to Moharamet. Megan, of course, goes to Moharamet on a pretty regular basis, so she sees it through her daughter's eyes. Kenny sees it, Sartor is a board member. I literally went back to back in the two school systems last week, so I could see the lunchroom at Moharamet and the, and the lunchroom at Masway. And I only bring Masway into this conversation because Masway has a separate lunchroom. So, what happens in Moharamet is that, one, due to overcrowding, 409 kids, we have literally one lunch period. It looks like we have three on paper, so I apologize for misleading the board if that's how you read that, because that's how I wrote it. But as I studied the situation, I realized Dennis and the staff weren't doing three lunches. They were doing this one long wagon train of a lunch that goes for 75 minutes, with the first kid classes coming in, and then every five minutes thereafter, there's a new class coming in. Five minutes later, new class, five minutes, and finally, you know, they start rotating out into, you know, recess. So, it's this constant motion. And, you know, again, no question, I agree with Kenny and Dennis, the kids, you know, are kids. They're, that's their lunchroom situation, and so they are living through it. But if you visit the lunchroom, what you get is this basically huge noise of kids having normal conversations, no different than we're having at this table, but because there's so many of them, and because the gymnasium is established as a lunchroom for this time period, the noise is bouncing right off concrete walls. And so, the children are being fine, and they're behaving well. It's just an issue of an inappropriate location to be feeding 409 students. So, that's one aspect of it. The next aspect of it is we literally are stopping phys ed in order to feed students. So, if you can imagine in your mind, 409 youngsters who have to stop phys ed to eat, 287 youngsters who get to eat and have phys ed, what you have is a major equity issue. Literally, just in time, there's 20% less time for phys ed at Moharamet than there is at Masway, compounded by the fact that you have 122 more students at Moharamet than Masway. What you have is an issue of reduced time and student ability to participate in phys ed. And then other aspects related to this in terms of when you have an overcrowded school, Dennis and the staff are making the best decisions they can, but they can't create space. And therefore, Dennis is making the best choices he can make as a leader in that school in terms of other services. So, it really is a situation that needs to be corrected, and we have an opportunity to correct it. I will tell you that I don't think you own that opportunity completely, because even though the voters have already raised the funds for this school year, I would be encouraging you, because the law is vague here, to bring it to the voters in March, right along with our budget. So, if you give it a green light tonight for me to do what I would like to do, which is simply the schematic design and stay within the $10,000 limit that is part of policy DJE, then the next step is when I have those schematic designs, I would reach out to you again and ask for us to be able to use policy DJR and interview three architects. So, by the time we get all the way to March, we'll have spent some of that money, probably as much as $50,000, to make sure that the schematic designs are done, the design and development work is done, our bidding for a construction manager is done, so that when the voters get a chance to vote on this, they'll know, one, they already raised the money in this budget year, so it's not like they have to raise new money, and, two, with their blessing in March, we literally could be in a place to break ground as soon as April Vacation, and a year from now have a cafeteria at Moharamet. So, all the way through, you would be partners in the decisions, and then ultimately, the voters will reaffirm that that decision you've made is the one that they want for the Moharamet children. So, I do think that, you know, it's very rare that opportunities like this exist in the course of, you know, a board's life and the superintendent's life in terms of basically serendipity. Nobody saw this coming. Well, we knew something was going to happen, but we didn't know what, and we didn't know what the numbers were, so we couldn't build it into the budget, and it would have been foolish for us to do it anyway. So, you know, here is a chance for us to correct a, you know, really a deficit in the building design that occurred from its opening. So, it's been the better part of 25 years, Dennis, where we've moved kids through lunch like this. And then the other piece I would put out there for your consideration is, when you make a decision in October to shift 50 or 60 kids from Moharamet to Masway, it doesn't change the lunchroom situation. So, this is worth doing regardless of that decision, but then when you make that decision, you'll make both schools saner. And I would hope that the board would entertain giving me permission this evening to go forward for schematic design and stay within the policy of DJE and not spend more than $10,000 to do that.
How much money are we getting back?
We're getting about, it's in the letter.
688.
680?
688.
$688,000, of which I'm predicting about a half million, 500,000 of that would be available to us, and the other 188 is what we owe our employees. It may, and that's, that's a plus or minus, because Sue's cringing when I use numbers like this, so.
And this was all paid in in this budget?
Has been raised to be paid in this budget.
And the LGC payment holiday means what?
Means we don't have to pay that $688,000 to them.
But next year, what do we pay?
We budget just like we always did. We'd have to budget.
It's a credit on the invoice. Okay.
Dr. Morse, can you please tell me what happens when there is inclement weather and children can't go outside at Moharamet? It's my understanding that teachers have a planning period, and many of them take the planning period at lunch. So, if the teachers are taking their planning period and they're not in their classrooms, what do we do with all these children that we can't send outside?
I would have to invite Dennis to the podium, because he would be the expert on that.
We use the common areas, so there is adequate supervision, and the kids go to the common areas. And actually, we have recess before lunch, and so that happens in a rainy day in the common areas. It's, it's an asset in the school, those common areas, because it does provide that sort of relief.
But you're trying to get 400-plus kids into
Correct.
Common areas that really aren't designed.
It's roughly, because of the cycle, there's probably 80 and 90 kids in each common area, then they come, and they're replaced by other kids until the recess time is over.
Is instruction happening in those other classrooms, Dennis?
Yeah, excuse me?
Is instruction still happening in those classrooms when recess is happening?
Initially, yes, with the older children, yeah.
So, there's disruption?
Disruption.
Yeah.
Far from ideal.
Thank you.
Does Masway have common areas?
Masway has the cafeteria.
The north commons?
And, yes, and then they have this big area down by the library. Anything else? Thanks, Den.
They have the cafeteria as a common area. Why can't we have common areas, cafeteria?
I'm not following that. I didn't understand the question.
Why can't our common areas at Moharamet become the cafeteria?
Well, I mean, it would be like this being the cafeteria and the kitchen being at the end of the hallway, literally. That would be the example I would use. So, you'd be carrying food through the length of the building, disposing of food through the length of the building. Wouldn't, it wouldn't be an appropriate use of those areas.
Can I respond to that? We did at one, we did at one point try to use the common areas because we were desperate for lunch. It just didn't work for the reasons you cited. We would have spills from one end of the hall to the other end of the hall, and the custodian was going crazy, and teachers were going crazy. We had to abandon it.
So, you would like a motion to, for the board to authorize you to go forward to develop schematic drawings for a new cafeteria?
Yes.
Cafeteria at Moharamet, right. I'd like to move to authorize superintendent to move forward to develop schematic drawings for a new, it's a cafeteria, right?
Yes.
A new cafeteria at Moharamet School.
Not to exceed 10,000?
Not, that's the, not to exceed 10,000.
A second.
Moved by Tom, second by Ann. Discussion, Ann?
I'm just curious, Dr. Morse, that the current space functions as a cafeteria and a gymnasium. So, how is it that we decided what we need is a cafeteria rather than a new gymnasium?
Well, you know, that's a great question, and the answer is gymnasium would be about four times as much. And so, I do think we need to do upgrades to the elementary gymnasiums and put down some rubberized flooring, because kids' knees and ankles and so forth are not really being treated properly when you just put tile over concrete. But that's a future budget issue that we need to discuss. The cafeteria, as long as we don't touch the kitchen itself, we can build a cafeteria. What we'll do is we'll reverse the serving side. As long as we don't put too much effort inside that kitchen, we'll be in okay shape with this budget. But if we ended up having to touch that kitchen in any significant way, kitchens are, just like in homes, are exorbitantly expensive, and industrial kitchens in schools are even that much more. You know, just a fume hood is, you know, 20, $30,000 in a, in a commercial kitchen. So, what we're trying to do is make sure that we utilize the kitchen part of it without major renovation, renovation.
Peter?
So, Dr. Morse, when you said you would flip the serving side of the kitchen, is that to say that the cafeteria expansion would go out into the current parking lot area?
You have, that's part of what the schematic design will do, Pete. The architect would come in, and he would analyze which side of the cafeteria makes the most sense. We've done, Dennis and I have done that conversation. And initially, quite frankly, I thought it would make sense to do it on the far side of the cafeteria, but then that makes no sense in terms of serving kids any more than using the common areas. And so, you're really forced into two directions. I think the parking lot is one direction, and the church is the other, towards the church is the other.
Okay, thank you.
Kenny?
I think germane to the discussion and maybe doesn't speak totally to that motion is just that the sentence, "Moharamet students experience longer lines, and students must speed eat." And it's something I really witnessed is the lines, and the more the students are in line, the less time they have to sit and eat. And, and it might not please our chairman, but in, it might be worthwhile to look to see if those lines could be reduced, if temporarily an extra cafeteria staff worker might be added, if that, something to look at it and see if that would work.
Yeah, absolutely. Kenny, thank you for that. It's really, it's not about staffing, it's about the number of students. Dennis has got an army of grownups in that room, and they do, as he said, they are, many of them are doing it on a voluntary basis, just to expedite the kids getting through the lines. It's really about not, we have plenty of adults, it's just the fact that we have too many kids in the building. So, I appreciate the thought, though.
I was just going to chime in. I've, I spent a lot of time handing out little samples of food.
Captain vegetable?
At, at Moharamet, I'm pretty familiar with the lunch cycle there. And it's like, the difficulty, you can't, it's the logjam of going into that little, like, serving area, and so there's no real effective way to speed it up. And by the way, that's the, actually, the biggest complaint that kids have, is that they don't have enough time to eat.
Absolutely.
And, and again, the food, it's, it just is a crazy, crazy thing. And, you know, my daughter always comes home and is like, I didn't, I'm like, why didn't you eat that?
Yeah.
I just didn't have enough time, so.
Megan?
I have several questions. The 500, the estimated 500,000, we're confident that would cover the full cost of?
We're not confident, because we haven't, we have to get through a couple of stages before we really know.
Okay.
But in terms of my talking to people who are in the know, they think it's a reasonable number.
Okay.
So, the best I can do is, you know, to reach out to professionals I know and say, is this, is this feasible? And so far, everybody said they thought it was.
Okay. And then during this period of construction, you're talking about it possibly being done in October, November. Obviously, we have to feed the children before it's ready, so how would that transition period be handled?
So, I mean, that's, those are, those are really important questions, Megan, it's not just food, serving food. So, obviously, as you're building the cafeteria, it wouldn't break through the wall that currently exists as the outside wall of the school. So, that construction would be happening, and then at some point, when that cafeteria is to the point of being finished, that's when they do the final breakthrough and realign. So, Doris is here, and she can step up to the podium. What I would anticipate happening, knowing Doris, is that we would be doing bag lunches or, or bringing in lunches from the high school, probably soups and chowders and that kind of thing. And you want to speak to how you would do a temporary lunch program while, while that wall is being broken into and they flip the serving line?
If we had to satellite food, we are equipped to do that now. I just wanted to make a mention about the, the current situation. The thing that's most difficult is definitely the schedule, because it's such a short time. It is unlike any other food service program I've ever had, because of it constantly going. We have salad bars at every school now. The kids have- absolutely love them. They make their own choices. They're really hurried. I mean, they're little. It takes them a while to make those choices, but it's good. Kids eat things that they choose themselves over things that you put on their plates. But on Tuesday, because we can't have the full gym, they can't have their salad bar. On Wednesday, they'll come in and they'll say, do we have a salad bar today? I mean, they miss it. So that's difficult. Also, because it is constant, there's no refilling, refreshing between lines because there is no between lines. And every child should have the same choices. The last child should have the same choices as a child who's first in line. And that's pretty much an impossible thing to do with the current schedule. So that's very difficult.
I think the other part of it, Megan, and the other part of your answer is food delivery, but also the parking would be impacted during construction. And so the way that I envision it, the bus loop would still work, but we would contact the town office and ask if we can use not just the church for satellite parking, but the town parking lots during that phase of construction in the spring and in the fall. So I'm pretty sure they would be willing. And then, you know, we need to make contact with the town officials in relation to permitting and fire safety codes and so forth. Because what I learned today, you guys won't be surprised what I learned today, but I learned today is there's very little regulation from Concord in relation to school construction, meaning none. Some printed guidelines. Again, I'm just not used to that.
The money?
Yeah. Maine has a whole Bureau of Public Improvement that comes in and they sit right at the table and they take away money to pay themselves. And it's a very, very complex process in Maine. But I did talk to our attorney today and he said, no, there's some published stuff, though, Jim, if you want to read it. So, okay. So I think our partners in this is going to be state fire marshal and local fire department in terms of making sure that we're up to code.
Would it be possible for us to purchase a portable trolley salad bar from Muharamit in the interim that could be in the room in a different location for kids who just want to go through the salad bar and not through the rest of the hot lunch line?
Well, actually, that's how we do it now. We have a trolley type. It's on wheels and so it moves. But the problem is that it's the conflict between trying to get FISED in and feed the kids. And on Tuesday, Dennis really doesn't have any choice. He's got to let them both happen at the same time. And that's really what complicates the issue on Tuesday. The other four days, we're just literally giving up on FISED so we can feed the kids. So it is a very difficult situation for the kids. So that is on wheels. It's just there's no place to put it, literally.
I have a question about the sizing requirements that we're going to give to whomever does
a schematic. What are we sizing this cafeteria to support in terms of capacity?
Yeah.
And then what is the ultimate change in this? I mean, what, because this is going to tie into some of the decision-making, you know, if, I don't know what we're going to decide in October about the equalization of enrollment, but if we do, you know, kind of flash cut over versus an incremental, I mean, the problem of overcrowding may still persist at Muharamit. So I'm curious about what, what are we going to stipulate that we want this cafeteria to support and what type of schedule?
Great question, and thank you. We are sizing it up for three lunches, serving 360 students. So that will give us plenty of room initially. And then as the long-range planning committee numbers project, if the numbers go down, we'll still be in a cafeteria that's plenty big enough for the schools. What we learned in my walkthrough is even at 287, Carrie's cafeteria is just about 10 feet shorter than it should be. And so that helped me make the decision about how big Muharamit's should be. And so that's what we did. We went literally over to Masway and looked at it and it's zenith when she had a full lunch. And we decided she's about 10 feet shorter than she would need to be if we're going to build from scratch. So when we're talking about Muharamit, that's the footprint that we're using, that Masway footprint plus 10 feet.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Other questions, comments?
Thanks, Doris.
Are we ready for a vote? Could I have a show of hands, please? We have seven in the affirmative, Peter in the affirmative, motion carries. And then honorary vote from Dennis.
Actually, I want Jay.
Now comes the fun part, handbooks.
Okay, so if I could just start out, in your packet tonight is a framework or a format for student handbooks. So up until this school year, the board by policy had no role in handbooks. And that policy was changed to include board review. Pretty clearly, this is the first time that the board has seen handbooks, first time that we all have seen them in a collective fashion. And what we learned is that they're all over the map in terms of content, what they have, what they don't have and so forth, which sort of makes sense because that, you know, is the nature of the school system. Knowing that once we looked at them all, that there was that dramatic inconsistency, I did meet with the eight administrative team and had put together a framework. And the framework that I used was one that Todd uses at the high school because as I looked at the four handbooks, pretty clearly the high school has to have, you know, a far more articulate and complete handbook because of the age of the students and so forth. And it wouldn't be appropriate for the two elementary schools to have a handbook that looked that comprehensive because so much of what happens at the high school doesn't happen at the elementary schools. However, that doesn't mean that they can't assume the same face. And so what looks very prescriptive here is really the result of my going through the high school handbook with Todd and then taking that work and bring it to the administrative team and then taking their work and giving it to Wendy to make sure we had the right policies articulated. So the intent tonight is to, you know, for you to see the handbooks, but then to also see what they would look like in July of 2014. So what we're anticipating, or what we have agreed to, is that there would be a cover identifier because some, believe it or not, some came in with no cover, as you all know. And it would have a district identifier as well as the school identifier because it doesn't help a whole lot to know that you're at Masway if you don't know what school system you're in. So we agreed that they would have the identifiers for the district and the building. And then the back cover or the first page, and that came up because we learned in the conversation with the administrative team that it costs a lot of money to print on the backside of a cover. So one of the administrators was smart enough to say, well, we don't want to really spend that money, do we? We could just put it on the first page. What's important to be on the first page is the district's vision and the fact that we're required by federal law and any publication to have our equal opportunity statement. So this sounds very prescriptive and I apologize, but I think this will work for our administrative team. Next would be the table of content, how frustrating it is to open a document and not be able to get to what you want to get to because there's no table of content. And then the most popular thing that parents want, the district calendar. And then staff directory for the building. And what I said to the principals is if you start with your name and you put your email address, then just give the protocol for establishing emails. So we're not typing email addresses like crazy. You know, it's the first initial, last name, at o r c s d dot org. That applies to everybody in the district. So once that's done and you have the list of names, then you have an easy way of making contact. And this will all show up on our web pages. There'll be very few hard copies, but there will be some. Emergency closing information is the next piece that we thought was important to parents. You know, we have a snow day. Today, we had power outage at Masway. We need to be able to communicate. How do we communicate? The radio stations, the instant messaging. The next page is where the schools get to give their imprint. And things like arrival/departure chimes, change between the buildings. So it makes sense that this would be unique. Visitor procedures, although we have, you know, the door locks and the sign-in, there are other unique things that each building does. School safety procedures, absentee process, grading protocols, student accident insurance. We get calls on how do parents participate in that. Annual assessments with a purpose because, you know, we really want to be clear why we're doing our assessments. Afternoon activities for the elementaries are different than the high schools, so that would be unique to the elementaries. And by the way, Dennis and Carrie would be doing theirs together. Jay and Todd would be doing theirs together so they have the similar important information for grade appropriate records request all the time, bus routes. You know, how many times do we get calls saying, what road is my child going to be picked up on and what time? Lisa has that all done. We'll just make a connection to that URL and people can hit on it and be right there. And then anything unique to the school. So it gives Dennis a place to talk about his book collection or some other unique aspect of his building that he wants to make sure parents are aware of. And then the last section is common policies. The policies that we identified as important are the equal opportunity policy, again, nondiscrimination, acceptable use policy for technology, discipline policy and procedures. Those change age-appropriate, so that makes some sense. Transportation policy, we get, often we get calls on, you know, what's the walking distance and so forth, and student conduct on the bus. Drug and alcohol policies, school safety and weapons policies, and then copyright compliance slash plagiarism, our FERPA policy and our 504 special ed procedures. So this would be the framework that you would see the work come out from our principals in July. And July is important because they have to publish these for the new school year rather than waiting until, you know, September. You'll get them well in advance of the published date. So you'll see this format in the spring. So that's the work that we're committed to doing for you to get us a uniform imprint that says we're Oyster River, we're proud of it, and no matter what school you're going into, you will have access to this information.
That's great. And I thank everybody involved for doing all this since I've been pushing for this.
Really?
Yeah, I have. I really, really have. So I appreciate that. And I will make the motion that we accept them with hopes for July.
Second.
Thank you.
Now, can I speak?
Yeah.
I was concerned when I read through the other renditions that who the audience was, was not articulated. And thank you, it's very clear with us who the audience is, whether it's parents or students or someone else who has questions about how our buildings operate. One addition I might recommend is an index of our policies perhaps that could go in the back. Another way of making it easier to establish what policies are in this handbook so that when modifications are made to the policies, there's a quick way of identifying where they are and which ones are included.
So we talked about that a little bit today, Ann. And what we anticipate doing is actually hot linking the table of contents and the policies. So when somebody clicks on it, it opens right to the policy manual, much like the design we're working on for the master page for the new webpage. So it's all doable now because we've done it for, almost done it for the master page for the web. So this will be, I think, you know, a major improvement in our work. And I have to say, the administrators were on board. They were just looking for guidance. And once we had guidance, we were able to work our way through it easily.
That's great. This is awesome. Thank you.
I see something, I'm noticing some things that I think should be included. I don't see here.
What would they be? Yep.
Well, the, I think, especially in the elementary level, the library, media center, what happens when your child loses a book or damages material, things, you know, how long can book, how many books can you take out, how long, that type of thing. And also in reviewing the handbooks, I saw that there was description about entrance age for beginning school.
Yeah.
As well as, I think we need to include something about residency requirements. It's also important.
I'm sure Carolyn would love to see those requirements.
The other about, maybe I'm just not seeing it, but school lunch, snacks and breakfast, that's going to be different, you know. I think it would be nice to know when each school has those meals. And then the whole school nurse medication and applicable forms that parents need to complete or guardians need to complete. And, I don't know.
Those are all good additions.
I could think of more, probably.
No. We have to be careful that...
I know. I just, those came to my mind.
Yeah, those are good ones, especially the one on residency since we've been dealing with it all fall.
Megan just commented on the forms you fill out. I'm curious where we're going with that in the district and will there be hot links to get to those forms? And as a parent who had three children go through the system, I fill the same forms out every year over and over again. And I'm wondering...
It's not a front burner issue because of the amount of work that's currently on Josh's plate, the IT director. I think eventually we should be at an electronic forum place. But right now, with the priority being the redesign of the webpage, so it's more usable, it's taking, that's taking as much of his time. And then the whole upgrade of the infrastructure. So I agree that it should be a goal, Ann, but I don't see it in this school year just because of the workload of what we put on his plate right now.
A future.
Plus, he's writing the technology plan with his, with a community group. So, yeah, future for sure. And sooner the better, but we need to get some of those structural things done. Yep.
I have a question. About the, so the handbooks we received are considered published right now for this year, right?
Correct.
Where can students and parents, legal guardians find them?
Jay, would you like to take a shot at that? You look like you wanted to talk.
Well, sure, I'll help out. Every student's provided with an agenda book. I'll speak for the middle school and the high school, so the student handbooks are in there. I forget, someone asked the question, who really is the, what's the audience? And it really was, excuse me, the students. We've never really kind of relooked at this until Dr. Morse has, you know, done a great job helping facilitate this in terms of parent, student, community. And it gets kind of complicated because we do have some fiscal responsibility because once you start printing these things, the bigger and bigger they get, it's more expensive.
So you and Todd actually have a student, what's it called?
Student agenda book.
Agenda book.
Yeah.
And your handbook is embedded in that.
Exactly.
And it's really kind of a way, it's a notebook, is it, is it not?
Yeah, it's like an organizer.
Yeah, an organizer.
It's very popular.
So instead of the traditional handbook where you have it kind of being self-contained over here and then the student organizer, the high school and middle school have blended the two into a comprehensive document, which is pretty cool.
Yeah. So if you have a student at the middle school, you should be able to see it.
I guess, what about the elementary?
Dennis? Online. And Carrie's is online.
And ours is online as well, so.
That's all you need.
Yep.
Please don't publish a whole bunch of them.
No, our intent in terms of hard copy would be limited, you know. We really would prefer to keep them electronic because it's much easier for the parents to access and students if they want to. But I think that the middle school and high school have figured out a way for, at least the students initially, to want to be carrying around an organizer. Now, whether by the time they're in Peter's grade, they continue to, I probably would think not. But based the smirk on his face, they say probably that's true. But he's had it for a few years, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Good. Well, thank you very much, guys. I appreciate you giving us the direction and the latitude to have this for you. Yep. You and Ian.
Yep. All those in favor? Seven in the affirmative, Peter in the affirmative, motion carries, and...
And you have your policies, Maria.
Yes. And we have a list of policies.
I was just sad before you begin, Maria, that these are policies that the policy committee reviewed in their first read already, then sent back to my office for cleaning up and... reviewed in their first read already, then sent back to my office for cleaning up and so forth. So these, these policies have all seen a first read.
They have. And what we sent them back for was in case administration needed to look at them and for the cross references. Tom?
I'll make a motion to approve her second read and adoption, policy EFA, availability and distribution of healthy foods, policy GB, GD, and R, workers' compensation, temporary alternative work, policy GBJ, personnel records, policy GCK and R, staff assignment and transfers, and policy IMBC and R, alternative credit options.
Moved by Tom, second by Anne. Discussion? Hearing none.
It's really big, too. Now, I just have a problem with GB, GD, and GB, GDR because there's, the one of them, the first one refers to in compliance with RSA 281A, 23B, and the second one refers to accordance with 281A, 25A. And one of them's really just a form that's supposed to kind of duplicate what's already in the policy, but it's a different, it's a different kind of policy statement. So I don't see that the R is really, the R has information in it that the policy doesn't have, and so they don't seem to be, they don't flow. They don't seem to be one after the other.
And which policies is?
GB, GD, and the R document.
GB?
Yeah, GD.
GD?
Yep.
Are you making a motion to withdraw this?
Yes, that's what I'm doing.
GB, GD, and the R. Is there a second to this motion? Moved by, second implied, Al. Discussion on the amendment? This is to send it back to policy committee. All those in favor? Seven in the affirmative, Peter in the affirmative, motion carries. So then we're back to the main motion, which is that list of policies minus GB, GD, and the R that goes along with it. More discussion?
We don't typically approve, we don't approve the Rs.
Right.
Right. But we'll look at it.
So the motion was made including the Rs for these other ones as well.
Is that a friendly amendment to take out the Rs?
Yes. I'd like to make that amendment to remove the Rs.
Yes.
Oh, you did it? Okay.
He just tried.
I'm with you.
And that is okay with it?
Yes.
A second or? Okay. Any further discussion? Could we have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative, Peter in the affirmative, motion carries. And we already done the handbooks.
We have, so.
School board committee updates. Al.
We had our first meeting of the fall for the ABC. It's a small group, a talented group that includes a town counselor and a state representative. And the main crux of our meeting was to set up many more meetings during the budget cycle to, to review the budget, specifically moving after it, we get, I think it's the 18th of October that we get the budget. So we'll really be kind of pushing to get a report out by the beginning of December.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Dan, public comment? Ms. Haru.
Dean Ruvin, Lee. There's lots of things to talk about tonight, but I'm going to stick to one little one, which is I think this 2% year-on-year increase in the tuition is insufficient and is going to get us in big trouble. And I will tell you why. I've been playing with these numbers, but I don't have them in front of me. But over the past, since about 2001, inflation has been running fairly constant, 2.4%. So we're already, if it continues, which there's every reason to think it'll actually get bigger, but if it does continue at that rate, it's still below the cost of living. School costs, on the other hand, have been, have been increasing. Let's just look at cost per pupil in New Hampshire since 2001 goes up at a rate of around 6%. And after the 2008 crash, it's sort of leveled off a bit, but it's still 3% or 4%. I don't remember the exact number. So let's say it's 4%, but we're only asking for a 2% increase. So over the course of eight years, we will be 16% in the hole.
That's bad.
Huh?
That's bad.
You know, I would prefer a deal where, you know, whatever the actual, our costs per pupil increase, well, those guys can pay it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Several, I almost forgot this, and I'm glad I didn't. Several of my staff wanted me to tell you how much they appreciate the fact that you added the teacher, it modified class sizes and eight classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Then we go to closing actions. Future meeting days. 1813, is that not today?
Yeah, that's today, so.
So we'll see each other on.
And if I may, Madam Chair, just to remind the board that the second meeting is obviously on the 16th, but we added a third meeting in October for the 23rd because of the workload in October for you in terms of, you know, major decisions is pretty heavy. I hope you enjoyed this evening because for the next three meetings, it's going to be top sledding because there's a lot of, of big decisions for you to be making. So three meetings in October, the second, the 16th, and the 23rd.
Yes. And there is no public session tonight?
No non-public, no non-meeting.
So I am waiting with bated anticipation for motion to adjourn. By Al, seconded by Anne. And on a unanimous hand, waving, we are adjourned.